Alderman Bernelli.
Here.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Here.
Alderwoman Cato.
Here.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Giacomi.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy. Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman Nujain.
Present.
Alderman Sherman. Alderman Purnaruski.
Here.
Fourteen present.
Thank you. We have a quorum with that. We'll go to public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up, Mr. Sheriff, if you call the first speaker.
First speaker tonight from 62 Avalon Circle, Richard Woods. Good evening, everyone. Richard Wood, Avalon Circle, Waterbury. I'm here tonight to talk about a couple of things. The first thing being the need for an ordinance to delay demolition. You'll hear, see here, some of the other folks from the library meeting that we had to go over the technical aspects of this and to make sure that it was presented in the right light. Second thing is, because of the nature of what's happening in town, I noticed that we now have a million-dollar front office in our education building. I also met with the Board of Ed last week to discuss cutting their budget by $25 or $30 million by utilizing online teaching. We can't afford what we're spending. The million dollars we're spending on these folks that we just hired, we can't afford. The money isn't there. I mean, you may talk like it is, but it isn't. And when you guys go out to go for reelection, when your constituents ask you, "Why isn't my house tax down by $500?" You can say, "Well, we have it in the front office of the Chase Building." You can talk to them there about reducing your taxes, because the education budget is way out of whack. Talk about spending money like a drunken sailor, there you have it. And it's not a case of, "Can we change it to make it better?" You can't. We have to utilize online education. This is 2018, not 918. We can use these techniques. Post University is using it, other colleges. We can bring it to a combination with post-college. We can utilize the system of online to reduce the number of schools we have, which means we would cut the budget. Just take the five schools, and you should have some of this information, the five schools with the biggest expense of heat, lights, water, insurance, and just figure that alone, what we could use in terms of cutting the budget. And the thing is, we have technical people here already. Dave is here. He can give us some information at some point about how to utilize the computer systems with Comcast and whatever. The thing is, we also can use that to provide education for the homeschooling folks, so they could just connect with that and get a homeschooling without any trouble at all. And that's one thing we should give consideration to, because we cannot continue paying the taxes we're paying. It's easy to say that, but at least I offer a way of reducing it, because if you don't reduce it, and when you go out into the hinterlands next year and ask people to vote for you, they're going to say, "How come my taxes aren't down? What did you not do to lower my taxes? Have you done anything to stop spending money?" Really? I mean, you know, I'm a teller. People, "Ask you for the check. I can see it now." Asking you for a check, $500, you're going to run so fast the other way, your head will spin. And that's the way it's going to be. People are going to say, "Why are we spending more money every year on something and not getting anything for it?" We're graduating kids from high school who can't read. I spoke to some of the Board of Education members about it. They said, "Oh, we know." What are you talking about? Hundreds of millions of dollars being spent the past few years, and the kids can't read, can't write. Ask anybody who runs a fast-food restaurant, if the computers go down, can they make change out of a $10 bill where the bill is $7.83?
One minute, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. The thing is, this is what we're faced with. We have to modernize our education system. We have to stop spending money, money that we don't have. I'm not going to give it to you. I'm going to stop paying taxes, I think. Might as well go down to the Carolinas, 75 degrees in February. Give it some thought. I hope I gave you something to worry about, because if you don't reduce taxes, I don't know if you're going to get reelected. How's that for making life tough? Meantime, Dominis Proviscum. Peace be with you. Have a good evening. Next speaker from 176 Hadad Road, Laurie Savino.
Hi, guys. I guess I didn't think this all the way through, but my name is Laurie Savino, and I am a resident of Waterbury with my husband, Michael. We've been here a year and a half, and we also own a small business. We came here because we believed in Waterbury. And I got to tell you, when I saw that church go down, it was the first time I was ever embarrassed living here. I really hope you guys are thinking, "I hope you have a real vision for this city," because you know what? When you allow something like that, you're saying, the leadership of the city is saying, "You don't care about this city, and you don't have a vision." I've never seen anything like that in my life, and I pray to God that we never see it again. I really do. Historic preservation is so essential. It's a vital part of any city. This is an awesome city. I come from Boston, another great city, where we valued history, where we got it. We understood that it was a bridge to our past as well as our future. And to just dismiss that is such a slap in the face, not only to the artists who created these beautiful things, but also to us, because they're ours. No matter who physically owns the building, a historic property should belong to the community in which it belongs. I've never seen anything like it. You know, terrorists understood this. When they came after our country in 9/11, what did they go for? They went for the White House, they went for the Twin Towers, and they went for the Pentagon. They went for the things that we saw were symbols of our history, of our connectedness, of our freedom, the good in us, the things that are good about this country. And I'm really just, I'm afraid of where everyone is going. You know, since 2007, it's been on the books that municipalities are allowed to have an ordinance for demo delay. And I'm going to believe that that was just, it just slipped through the cracks. I believe that we have a right to that, and we should insist on having a historic commission also. The city does not have a historic commission. We need to have one appointed immediately. This can't wait. We have reason to believe that more buildings are getting ready to go down. Not every building is worthy of being saved. We're not trying to save everything. And there is a process. There's a process to identify, does the building have a historic value, some kind of intrinsic value? So it's not something we're just trying to save everything. But this whole demolition by neglect has got to stop. I've been watching the old Matituck and how it's just going to pieces, and all these beautiful buildings. And if you just, like in that movie with Robin Williams, where he stood up on the desk, if you just thought a little different of what the city has to offer, because we believed in it. We came here by our own free choice, and we believe in the future of this place. But you absolutely cannot get to it that way by destroying public buildings like that. Thank you.
Next speaker from 144 West Main Street, Robert Burns, Matituck Museum.
Good evening. I'm Bob Burns from the Matituck Museum, 144 West Main Street. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Aldermen, I'm here this evening on behalf of the Matituck Historical Society to support your decision to explore a demolition delay ordinance for the city of Waterbury. The city, and in particular, the downtown Waterbury Historic District, is blessed with an abundance of intact buildings spanning the 19th and 20th centuries, representing several major architectural styles. The adoption of a demolition delay ordinance will not hinder the development of downtown Waterbury. It will serve to highlight the richness of opportunities for thoughtful development of our city's beautiful architecture while providing a period of reflection for those building projects identified as potentially distinct or significant. The city's commitment to adaptive reuse of historic properties is evident in its efforts to find a developer for the Howland Hughes Building, and there are others I could mention. We commend your decision to study the ordinance and offer the assistance of the Matituck Museum in your research, if we may be of assistance. Thank you.
Next speaker from 158 Westmont Drive, Betty Jane Wesson.
Good evening. Betty Jane Wesson, 159 Westmont Drive. The destruction of the Trinity Church Building by the Immaculate Conception Church to create a few parking spaces is a slap in the face of Waterbury history. And so I'm here tonight to speak in favor of creating and putting in place a demolition delay ordinance to use as a tool to begin to protect historic buildings in the city of Waterbury. As a Waterbury native, I can look back to the '50s, to a time when the streets, say, for example, of Willow Street, my old neighborhood where I grew up, was filled with Victorian houses. Today, there are big gaps for parking lots where houses were torn down. I remember a time when the hillside neighborhood was lined with mansions, several of them lost to a misguided 1960s developer planning to create two luxury high-rises, the Westview House and Carlton Towers, that have turned into the very opposite type of housing to what was then imagined for them. Just last week, I exited the Matituck Museum, and as I turned from Gaffney Place onto Central Avenue, I saw a new, big, empty parking lot where two old houses stood side by side until recently. Yes, some of these houses were run down, but they were also what is known to preservationists as contributing structures to the streetscape ambiance. I even remember the Elton House at the corner of Grandin Church torn down for a courthouse, the Hayes House on North Elm and Cole Streets demolished in the dark of night for a St. Mary's parking garage. I also remember suggestions to tear down the Palace Theater. A number of beautiful old churches in Waterbury now stand empty. Will they be marked for future demolition, meeting the same fate as the handsome, historic, old Buckingham Building that once stood on Grand Street, now replaced by a parking garage? The buzzwords for demolition always include mold, asbestos, lead, and of course, cost. There are always sky-high costs, perhaps estimated so high as to scare supporters into backing down. And who is all this parking for? Mostly not for residents downtown, but for people who work downtown and then go home after work, maybe to the suburbs, leaving downtown a ghost town of empty parking lots that look like missing teeth in the face of our urban landscape. Back in the time of the Waterbury redevelopment craze, we could have lost the whole downtown if a woman named Elvira Balandah did not stand up and say, "Enough." And the first building saved, a former carriage house on Harrison Alley that had been used as the city's public toilet, now beautifully is repurposed as offices. So let's begin with a demolition delay ordinance to give citizens time to suggest alternative plans. Let's add a historic commission to look into saving what is left of Waterbury's historic buildings, and let's start tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker from 180 Prospect Street, Maxine Watts.
Yes, good evening. My name is Maxine Watts. I live at 180 Prospect Street in Waterbury. I have been in Waterbury my whole life. I was born and raised here, and so was my family and my grandparents. So we've, I have seen through all these years quite a few changes here in Waterbury. But I feel that Waterbury still has some historic buildings still standing, and I'm against the fact that there's no ordinance, there's no delay tactics on the books to save these buildings from homeowners, or not homeowners, people that own these buildings that decide, they decided that they want to demolish them, and not to put up anything that will benefit the city of Waterbury, but just another parking lot. In this particular instance, I lived there on Prospect Street, and I see right across the street from the church and the Immaculate is the old Waterbury parking garage, which has been demolished, and that area is just sitting there empty. And I'm just wondering if this delay had been in order, we could have at least have suggested to the owners that if you wanted a parking lot, that parking garage is empty, and maybe this would have prevented the demolition of the Trinity Episcopal Church. So I'm very concerned about that. I also am very concerned about quite a few of the historic areas that are still standing there empty. I live across the street from the Benedict Miller House, who was also owned by the city of Waterbury that is not being used. And so I feel that, you know, maybe this might be on the next chopping block. So I feel that before anyone could take action, that they should have a notice in front of these buildings to notify the public what's about to happen. And if this ordinance is in place, we might be able to approach them and stop the demolition of another historic building here in Waterbury. Thank you.
Next speaker from 259 Wood Street, Rachel Guest.
Good evening. Forty years ago, Waterbury was a pioneer of historic preservation. During the 1970s, a group of 150 residents and downtown business owners incorporated as the Waterbury Action to Conserve Our Heritage, or WATCH for short. WATCH was created in response to a plan by the Urban Renewal Agency to demolish many of downtown Waterbury's historic buildings, to be replaced by massive, modern buildings. Eighty-three buildings were slated for demolition, and many were lost before December 1978, when WATCH was able to obtain a preliminary injunction from the district court. One building, Drescher's, was saved by being relocated. They picked up the building and moved it a block away. More than 50 other buildings, however, were lost. WATCH filed a lawsuit against the city's Urban Renewal Agency and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which was funding the demolition plan. The U.S. Second Circuit Court of Appeals cited in favor of preservation issuing an injunction in July 1979 that stopped further demolition, and in December 1979, the verdict was upheld by the United States Supreme Court. As a result of WATCH's advocacy, Waterbury's remaining historic downtown buildings were saved, and this was something that we took pride in. Buildings that were slated for demolition were instead rehabilitated. These include De Oriels Restaurant and its neighboring buildings on Bank Street and the Peck Carriage House behind Drescher's. Also, as a result of WATCH's advocacy, a study of Waterbury historic properties was undertaken, and our downtown became a national historic district during the 1980s. Trinity Church was a contributing building to that district. Over the past three decades, we have grown complacent about our historic buildings, even though, when they are in good condition, they are one of Waterbury's greatest assets, luring developers, investors, and new residents into the city. We have assumed that our historic properties were protected by being placed on state and national historic registers. The demolition of Trinity Church is our wake-up call, making it clear that any property owner can destroy an irreplaceable architectural gem so long as they don't use government funding. The owners of historic buildings, without any local resources to help them, sometimes stop doing any maintenance and allow their properties to literally fall apart, turning a community and economic asset into a source of blight, which sometimes ends up costing the city money to demolish. There are many historic buildings in downtown Waterbury and throughout the city which will be lost in the next five to 10 years if we don't act now. If we lose these buildings, we will lose part of our history, part of our heritage, part of our identity. The Board of Aldermen has the power to help building owners and save our heritage. Fifty-seven other municipalities in Connecticut have adopted a demolition delay ordinance, and we should too. This is the first bare minimum step for protecting our historic buildings. But let's not stop with the bare minimum. Waterbury could become a leader in using historic preservation for revitalization, encouraging new investment, and helping building owners get the most out of their properties, turning blighted buildings into thriving investments. The Board of Aldermen has the power to create a historic preservation commission, which would review proposals to demolish historic properties, but it could also be proactive, identifying which historic buildings are worth saving, promoting those historic buildings as assets, and connecting building owners with financial resources they may not know about. Main Street Waterbury's facade improvement program is one example of how this could work. There are a number of buildings in downtown that were restored to their full beauty thanks to this grant program. Numerous other financial resources are available, but we do not currently have any way for building owners throughout the city to find out about those resources. The Historic Preservation Commission could fill that role. Once we have a Historic Preservation Commission and a demolition delay ordinance, we could become a certified local government eligible for technical assistance, training, and additional funding for building rehabilitation, structural assessments, and feasibility studies.
One minute, Ms. Guest.
Commitment to historic preservation can lead to higher property values, less population decline, more walkability, and a greater sense of community, all of which contribute to a healthier, more vibrant, more successful city. Waterbury is at a crossroads. We can continue to do nothing to support owners of historic buildings. We can do the bare minimum and adopt a demolition delay ordinance, or we could fully embrace the opportunities provided by adopting the ordinance, creating the commission, and becoming a certified local government. And I hope that you will take all of these things into consideration. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Meriden Road, Martin Spring.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Martin Spring, 1400 Meriden Road. I didn't come down here to speak on historical values, but I could just tell you this right now, that I am so happy and elated that we took the time to spend the money to fix this building right here, because this building could have went underneath the wrecking block. And I'm just glad that it was fixed and rectified and put back into the business it should have been in, because this is a historical building. And I agree with a lot of these people, you know, we have a lot of historical buildings in Waterbury, and we should pay attention to that, because we don't want to end up losing our historical buildings, because if we end up doing that, then we lose our history, our culture, and everything else. So that's something I think we should keep in mind. And I know sometimes things get very expensive, people can't afford it. I understand the Catholic diocese, I believe, they want to make a parking lot out of that. That church was there in 1853, I believe, way before the Civil War. And that's something we should, you know, watch, because, again, you know, that's a privately-owned entity, if you will, and I don't mean to put it that way, but, you know, it's up to the Catholic Church. Again, I'm not Catholic, I'm Protestant, but it doesn't matter. But the problem is, you know, people got to understand that this is a private enterprise here, and I understand how people feel. And so, you know, we should, and I agree, step up to the plate and watch and make sure historical buildings stay right where they are. Another thing I want to say is, I like to talk about the capital improvements and bond authorization for the Missipole Stadium. I know you put it on the agenda tonight, and I believe it was put on hold. You know, the thing is, I didn't get a chance to come to the last public hearing, and I really wanted to, but I'm involved with the Waterbury Neighborhood Council Dinner, which is going to be October 25. Hopefully, a lot of you people come and show up. And it's on my birthday, by the way. I really don't want to be there on my birthday, but a commitment is a commitment. And I'm still, what, 35 years old? Yeah, I wish, yeah. Maybe 15 years older than that. Anyways, the thing, maybe even older than that, too. But anyways, I'm just thinking, and it's missable building, you know, for, you know, missable stadium, I'm sorry. I just think, you know, this kind of money is a little bit too pricey for me, and I understand that we need capital improvements. I understand the lockers. I understand we need bathroom facilities. But the thing is, we got to look at this, is, are we going to make any profit on this? Because we just can't utilize this just for the kids to come in to play football or baseball. I think we should get some minor league teams in there, double-A, because I know when I go down to New Britain, they have the New Britain Bees now, was the New Britain Rock Cats. And then I haven't been to the Hartford Stadium for the Yard Goats, but I think that's the kind of menu, if you will, that we should try to track here in Waterbury. And I think each and every one of you on the Board of Aldermen should pay attention to that, because we just can't have a building there sitting, you know, empty and where nobody utilizing it. I think it's something we should turn around and have teams coming in, if you will, whether they be football teams. I'm not looking at the NFL, or I'm not looking at Major League Baseball. Obviously, we don't have enough room, capacity there. But the thing was, we could still start charging people to come in, because I know we had the Waterbury spirit coming in, and I know the mayor knows about that, and he's probably a big baseball fan. But of course, he's Yankee, and you know I'm a Red Sox guy, but that's okay, Mayor. You know, it's all right. Go Red Sox, man. Anyways, yeah, yeah. Anyways, you know, the mayor's a good guy. I like the mayor. I work with him. I like a lot of people in this room. But the thing is, we should concentrate on that and make sure we could turn around and, you know, utilize that place, if you will, for people to come in.
One minute, Ms. Spring.
People to come in and want to use that. Another thing I want to say, I don't have enough time here. And the mayor, you know, when he mentioned it, Waterbury is a great patriotic town. And it is, Mayor. I agree with you. Because, you know, you go back to the Revolutionary War. If you read your history in the United States, and especially in Waterbury, you know, our population wasn't big back then, but we had a lot of people we sent in Revolutionary War, the Civil War, and World War I, World War II. And remember, November 11 is coming up. So think about our veterans and what the sacrifices they made. And I found this in the Spring Archives, a picture of my father. I know it looks a lot better than me. But this is my father, World War II veteran. He served eight years, and he was overseas in the South Pacific. And the poor guy went through so much. And the mayor is right when he says, you know, we're a very patriotic town. This poor guy came home with malaria. He came home with his arms messed up. And he was still a good father, raised eight kids. And I just show you a picture of my father here. It's my dad.
And with that, we'll have to end.
Okay, just to let you know. But anyways, I'm going to get off the air right now, but
Thank you.
You know, we got to support our veterans. Thank you.
And have a happy birthday on Thursday, Martin.
Next speaker from 45 Pear Street, Sharonelle Samaska.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm hearing from former speakers that we're becoming a city where we have lack of caring, lack of planning, lack of vision, lack of reaching out to residents. I know that. I live at 45 Pear Street. I'm Sharon Samaska. I don't understand either why the church was demolished, but I can tell you, I wonder why a church, a gorgeous structure, was demolished. And the Bristol Babcock site sits now, how many years? I remember moving in, 1986, it started to decline. How many years ago is that? Forty, almost? Maybe more than 40? It now is a toxic dump, a site sore. I was told today, HRP Consulting Firm is hired to do a survey to evaluate the site as a phase one, first step, to see if the city will take it over. Well, I've got some questions about that. I also was told that they are not involving DEEP in this process, that they are not going to look at DEEP's former records. While I understand there's some question of having to do some new studies, I think it is an error not to look at all the data that DEEP has acquired based on all the problems at that site. And I would ask that WACC be kept abreast. I don't know why they're not. They should be given a contract copy of HRP so that we know what that company is supposed to be doing, and they should be certainly provided a copy of the assessment survey. This community is also an environmental justice community. Hi. Why aren't residents being advised? Why aren't residents... Why aren't residents being involved? It's our community. I'm going to ask you and suggest a vision here. And remember, grants are available not just for concrete roads and wooden buildings, they're available for parks, they're available for making us better. The state of Connecticut has a mandate that it must maintain and add to property in the state that is woodland, that is pristine. They are behind in what they're doing. Look at this site, take a ride by it. It is a perfect area for pristine, for conservation, for the environment. It is sitting next to, apparently as I understand it, where the Greenway is going to have to come across from Nogatuck side of the railroad tracks to get to Waterbury and go down Platts Mill. Do we really want people hiking through a concrete building, or do we want a park? How about a park? A park there where our children can go. Our area town has nothing, no park, no safe place for these kids to go. You could put a tennis court, you could put a park, you could put a community garden, and we could actually grow vegetables for Gwim. What about a tennis court, too? What about a museum on that site? Ask for a fee to go in the museum. Honor the Bristol Babcock people who were brilliant minds, one of the major factories in the city. Where are we honoring factories? If it were my dream, in 1986, we would have taken a part of that building and made it a museum. We never did that. I understand that it's difficult, but does all of Waterbury have to be concrete? The Planning Commission states that in their 180, 200 some odd page report, that they are looking at communities in entirety, not just the buildings. They're supposed to be planning a future for the city. Where is that planning? Because when I read half of the 180 some odd pages, I hear them say, conservation, environment, make our community great. I want to be a person who, when people come to me, they, and I can tell them, Waterbury's great, they care. We have created a safe place for our critters. We've created a place where our children can experience nature like nowhere else in the city. Why isn't Nogatuck River one of those things that's a part of the Greenway project? Why isn't it considered in the state of Connecticut and in the city of Waterbury, an important environmental landmark that would be a mark for our city? So I can tell people, we're not the poor people who live in Waterbury, we're the blessed people, because you, our Board of Aldermen, care enough to make a positive difference in this city, to save lives, not harm them. Thank you.
Next speaker from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence DiPillo.
Thank you. Lawrence DiPillo, 11 Steuben Street. Your item seven, historic structures. I can only say that it's too bad that Franklin K. Bergen and Elsie Rufflett, who formed the organization Watch, and successfully brought a former mayor and his administration to the Supreme Court, and in doing so, saved most of the historic buildings in the downtown, are not here with us, but I'm sure they would support this resolution. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about your item three, requesting of the intermunicipal agreement between Nogatuck and Waterbury. I'm just wondering if anybody here has, through the administration, has contacted the Gil Martin Community Club? And if you would please document how you reached out to the minority community in the South End in order to bring them in part this process, since this is everything that is across the street from the former Howard Johnson's building, all the way up to Jersey Street. And some of the questions I think that need to be answered is, what are the setbacks going to be? We both know, we all know that if there's any structures there, it's going to have to be blasted. So what are going to be the hours of the construction? What are the proposed hours for industrial operations once this gets going? You know, it's just not a matter of approving an intermunicipal agreement, because once the ink is dry, then it's sort of academic. So you need to get all of this done first, and hopefully you'll consider bringing the Gil Martin Community and the members who populate the South End in on the discussions. Under your old business, item one and two, you have the design of the new locker and restrooms for Municipal Stadium at a cost of $4 million. I passed out for all of you a proposal from Anchor. Anchor is actually builds modular, permanent buildings. They build them for offices, schools, and more. And what you'll see in there is that they build lockers and bathrooms up to and exceeding 10,000 square feet. Now, what the city's proposing is 8,000 square feet. That's a building that's 100 by 80. Now, when I ask about this, I'm told, oh, well, we're going to have a Hall of Fame. $4 million for bathrooms, on the taxpayers' dime. Where is the responsibility in this city towards the taxpayers? We've got the highest taxes, some of the highest car taxes, and yet, we're constantly told by everybody who's running for office, oh, we're going, we're concerned about you and we're watching your tax dollars. Yeah, you're watching them fly out the window. Because I did get an email back from this Anchor Modular Buildings, and according to them, they can put the building together for the city summers between $110 and $130 a square foot. What is the mayor proposing? $471 per square foot, because we have to have a Hall of Fame. I think the taxpayers are a little bit tired of watching these boards and commissions waste their money. People in this town are not rich, they're getting poorer. And if you approve ridiculous projects like this, they're going to be even poorer yet. So while you're running for office and telling them how concerned you are about their taxes, and how when you get to Hartford or Washington, wherever your next landing zone is going to be, just remember that you didn't watch out for their taxes when you were sitting in these seats. As far as the next item, you've got the thing here about the Charter of the City of Waterbury, and that has to do with the Civil Service Commission. It seems, you know, most of you don't understand, that the mayor has the authority to appoint. He does not have the authority to create, he does not have the authority to decide somebody's hours and what they're going to get paid. That's your job. You are the Board of Aldermen, you're the people who put the budget together, and you decide what positions there will be in this city. And when there isn't a position, it is up to this Board of Aldermen to direct civil service to create that position. What you have here is the Charter of the City of Waterbury regarding civil service, what you have is the ordinances here regarding civil service. Now, let me just tell you something about part-time employees. Under the ordinance, the Director of Human Resources, at his discretion, may authorize the filling of part-time positions involving less than 25 hours of work per week without regard to examination or other provisions.
One minute, Mr. DiPillo.
Regarding certification included in this regulation, the Civil Service Commission must approve all appointments to part-time positions before employment commences. I don't believe this ever went before civil service, and I believe the mayor already has the person in the position. I guess the rules and laws of the City of Waterbury don't mean anything. That's why this mayor is comfortable collecting two paychecks in violation of the ordinances of the City of Waterbury, and doesn't blink at it, because those rules and those regulations and those laws are written for somebody else, not him. And while you're sitting here in Corporation Council's here...
That's time, Mr. DiPillo, thank you. That's time, actually, it's 30 seconds over your time.
Well, I thank you so very much for the extra 30 seconds, Mr. President. I'll get to the contracts on the water and sewer next night.
Thank you, Mr. DiPillo.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. A few things I wanted to discuss. First of all, it's on your agenda about the, I believe it's item number seven. I believe if this is what people want to do, form some sort of a committee to oversee this, I would be open to it, but, listen, I came from St. Margaret's Church. Our church got bought out by a charter, I was not happy with it, but it's doing amazing things up there. Unfortunately, as a Catholic, the amount of people that are going to church every day continues to dwindle. I am now at the Immaculate Conception. I understand people's concerns about what they're doing to that church and the historical value, but quite frankly, the city, in my opinion, doesn't have, I don't think it'd stop that anyway, because, first of all, it's a church. Last I recall from history class, you know, there's a separation of church and state. You know, people are comparing the historical buildings, properties in downtown to churches. This administration's had a proven track record of trying to preserve some of these historical buildings in downtown. I don't think the mayor could be blamed, or the city could be blamed for, unfortunately, this church going down, but I have no problem with people talking about it and trying to stop it. And I believe the Immaculate Conception is in charge of that parking lot, so to say that we don't know who the parking lot is going to be for, that was all out there. Secondly, on your agenda, about the item number four, about the police contract, I would ask that you pass this. Our men and women in blue work very hard on a daily basis. I know there's been a lot of talk on the radio and everything else about crime and everything. These people are putting their lives out on the line every day, doing the best they can. It is not their fault of the crime that's going on, not just here, but everywhere in the state of Connecticut. I think we're going to have to toughen some of these laws and, in my opinion, rethink. And I have no problem giving certain people that have earned a second chance a second chance, but to keep letting the same repeat offenders out there, that is what we are dealing with out there. It is not our police to blame. And I think that this community and other communities should back our cops as much as possible, because they are doing a job that, quite frankly, a lot of people today, unfortunately, is not an easy profession for some people to decide to take on anymore. Your item one and two on old business, I would ask that you pass this. This, quite frankly, has taken way too long to go through some of this history. This was thrown on the mayor's lap when he took office. The mayor came out when this all was going on and said that this is a debacle, and said that he would form a committee, and he would make sure that this process was open to the public, and that it would get done. And I think that's what you're seeing here tonight, and this committee was formed on both parties and both sides of the aisle, of people that are working hard to try and get this project done. And for a speaker to come up here and say that all we have is a Hall of Fame up here, we have a training room...
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
We have bathrooms, locker rooms that are much needed. You know, I guess some people seem to forget about the other amenities and look to try and promote their innuendos on certain projects. I don't know if, you know, I have no problem with this whole thing, and to say that this is all we care about is this Hall of Fame, seems to me it's somebody who never made it to a Hall of Fame. But I would ask that you guys look at this, get this done, and we owe it to the citizens of the City of Waterbury, and we shouldn't have to explain to people why we have a prefabbed locker rooms for our kids. We should have a permanent place.
Thank you, Mr. Pelletier.
The stadium is our jewel. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, the next item on our agenda would be approval of the minutes from the meeting of Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, is their motion.
Mr. President, motion approved the minutes of the regular meeting on Tuesday, October 9th, 2018. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, second by Alderman Napoli. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. Did you want to speak, Mr. Mayor? The next item would be the mayor's report, so we'll hear from Mayor O'Leary.
I will try to keep my comments brief. First of all, I want to thank all the speakers here tonight for taking the time out of their busy schedules to tell us how they feel. I welcome that kind of civic support. I think it's good for the city, and I think it energizes others within the city. Having said that, I do want to talk about the stadium tonight. This is something that has been looked at for quite a long period of time. As has been said earlier, this is not being built as a Hall of Fame. This is, as a matter of fact, quite frankly, I was against the Hall of Fame in the hallway of this new structure. I like the Hall of Fame where it is now, but that's just me. The others felt differently about it, and so, believe it or not, I do accept input from others, and if their wish is to have the Hall of Fame be in the hallway of this building, then so be it. Yes, it's important for our residents, our students, and our athletes to have a place to go, to have locker rooms, to have bathrooms, to have, you know, we have tremendous, we, you as a board, have supported a tremendous amount of investment into Municipal Stadium. I think everyone in this room would be in agreement that, for a period of time, there was quite a debacle that did occur at Municipal Stadium. There's still a lot of finger pointing on that. We don't need to go backwards tonight on that issue. What we need to do is go forward and talk about the facility that has been presented to you. We have looked at this very carefully from a cost analysis perspective. We have, one of the things that has not been discussed is the huge amount of money for the infrastructure underneath this facility, plumbing, sewer, water, gas, et cetera. You know, so when you talk about price per square foot and different types of building structures, it's not apples to apples at all, quite frankly. It's very different. There's also something called the Bacon Davis wages that we are, have to live with here in the state of Connecticut. Some of us agree with that concept, some of us don't. Regardless, whether you agree or not, it's the law, and it drives up the cost of these projects dramatically. So that needs to be taken into consideration. That's a huge consideration. It's an absolute huge consideration. It can raise the price of a construction project 50 to 60 percent. It is what it is. That's the state we live in, and this is the laws that our legislator has passed. Having said that, one of the most important aspects of this building is the economic development opportunity. You know, that stadium has turned into something very, very special, whether people like it or not. It is beautiful there. It's amazing, the amount of work that's been done there over the years. The ball fields are magnificent, the location, some would say it's in the wrong place, others would say it's in the right place. I'm not quite sure, but I do know this, that there are a number of organizations that would love to pay the City of Waterbury to have events there, sporting events, college events, high school events, AAA, if that was the case. You know, one of my concerns about bringing in a AAA team, we've tried it, I'm a big baseball fan, I love baseball, I go to games when no one else is sitting there. The fact is, is that not everybody goes to baseball games. But at the end of the day, that's something that would be considered if it was economically viable for the City of Waterbury, and also would not take away from our students and our residents' opportunity to use the stadium as well. There's a lot of things to look at. There's nothing so simple as to stand up here and know it all, because I don't pretend to. We try to do the right thing, and sometimes we do, and sometimes we don't, but we do our best all the time, like you all do. At the end of the day... At the end of the day, when the stadium, baseball field, football field, softball field, little league field were redone, and we cut off, cut down the trees so the public could actually see the stadium and what's inside there, you know, the place is buzzing. It really is. And when the city of Waterbury was fortunate enough to get the Mickey Mantle and the Clemente World Series back three years ago, there's not a hotel room in the city during those weeks. You can't get a hotel room. You can't get one at the Hampton Inn, you can't get one at the Marriott, you can't get the one at the hotel up on Reedville and Scott Road. I mean, that's a fact. And then the fallovers into Southbury, they go to that Renaissance Hotel out there. You know, this is economic development opportunities. What's the return on the investment? First of all, you know, it brings people into the city. It does. And, you know, there could be plenty of opportunity for college events there, both football, baseball, and don't forget soccer. You know, soccer is becoming an incredibly popular sport. Commissioner Tom Van Stone on the Board of Education brought in a soccer tournament only a couple of weeks ago, brought thousands of people into the city, one weekend, one weekend. They would, they're more than welcome to play at the stadium, but we didn't have the right facilities for something as large as what they were proposing. So we had them up at Crosby High School, and they used the high school and the facilities inside the high school. But it was a great event, and I commend him for the effort for bringing that organization into Waterbury. So I ask you to think about tomorrow and the day after tomorrow, and, you know, it is a significant investment, but it finishes that property, and it's what's needed. It's what's needed for our residents, it's what's needed for our athletes, it's what's needed for our sports organizations, it's what's needed for the city to continue to grow economically, and I think it's very important to keep in consideration. And I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, before we go into the committees, we do have old business items number one and two, which are the bonding authorization and the construction contract for the locker and restroom facilities at the stadium. So unless there's an objection, we will take those up as a committee of the whole. Is there any objection? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to resolve ourselves into the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, we're now in the committee of the whole. And with that, we will then take up old business item number one, which is the request to approve a capital appropriation and bond authorization for improvements at Municipal Stadium in the amount of $5 million. Is there a motion with respect to old business number one?
Mr. President, the only thing I want to say on this is...
Do you have a motion first, Alderman?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And...
To approve, having been made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Lopez, is there any discussion? Alderman Brunelli.
Yes. It was, one of the things we had to do with this was the bleachers were not fit for people to sit on, and due to the right structure on the bleachers, we lost our space underneath. The only thing I could say is, it's bad government and bad business to start a project, put a lot of time, ton of money in it, and not finish it. We're almost there. I think it's the only thing to do for the best for the city and the people of Waterbury that will enjoy this for many years to come. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've done a bit of research. This is, I know, understanding for the $5 million, is it okay to talk about?
Yeah, you know what? Why don't we do this? For discussion purposes, we'll talk about both of them. There's no point doing it twice, and then we'll do the votes separately on one and two.
Thank you. So I made mention to where I work being my reference, frame of reference concerning a project of this, of this type. And upon further research, I've spoken to the architecture, architector, excuse me, architecture, that, architect, thank you, sorry. That does most of the work for Jangris's facilities. They also do work for many municipalities throughout the state of Connecticut. And speaking to him, their cost ranges anywhere from $350 to $800 per square foot for ranging different types of projects. I'd like to thank Santiago Belenos of the WDC and Michael Blank for providing me with more information concerning expenses of like projects throughout the city and state. And with that information, I will be supporting this project.
Further discussion? Hearing none, then the motion on the floor is to approve item number one, the capital appropriation and bond authorization for improvements at Municipal Stadium in the amount of $5 million. A yes vote will be to approve the bond authorization, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
All right, let's do a roll call vote, just so we'll get it on the record.
Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Yes.
Alderwoman Cato.
Yes.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Giacomi.
Yes.
Alderman Kula.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Matthews.
No.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Napoli.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain.
Yes.
Alderman Sherman.
Yes.
Alderman Pernaruski.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one no.
The motion carries, the bond authorization is approved. With respect to old business item number two, which is a design-build contract with JA Rosa Construction LLC for Municipal Stadium Locker Room and Restroom Facility in the amount of $3,965,791, do I have a motion?
Motion approved, old business item number two.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I did forget to mention that the price that municipalities pay for construction of this type, or any type, is obscenely expensive compared to the private sector. I'm not sure what I can do or we can do as a board, maybe there's nothing we can do, but it's obscene what we pay for the, for this type of facility, for any construction throughout the city of Waterbury, throughout the state, and probably throughout the nation. Unfortunately, the architect that I mentioned stated that it easily costs a municipality twice what a private industry does to build a facility, any facility. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing I would just note in this price is also, the design and the building costs are not separated out. This is a design-build cost, so we're normally, when you did a bid, you just have the construction dollars. This, it also includes the design, because it's a design-build with a project manager at risk type of project. So the number's inflated as a result of that as well, that you would not normally see. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Giacomi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to take too long, but I think it is kind of important to note as well, and it's something that I think the mayor touched on and other people have kind of mentioned throughout this process, that, you know, taking the sort of short-term versus the long-term view and what their goals are. In other words, saying, well, we just need a locker room and a bathroom, something to put there for people to get changed and spectators to use, which sounds good sort of in isolation, but for the type of events and things that I think the city is planning to try and market, for some of the organizations that wanted to come in and use the facility, and sometimes you're sort of at the mercy of them as well. If you talk about attracting college sports, the NCAA, et cetera, there are certain things that they look for or that they would require in a facility before they allow an event to be held there. And while the city may say, well, we think maybe in isolation, we just need a couple of bathrooms and locker rooms, I think what we found throughout the process was, and I think Mark Lombardo from the Park Department and the people from the WDC that are here would hopefully, I think, back me up on this, was that as we went through, it wasn't necessarily just sort of people adding on things to a Christmas wish list, but it was a lot of things that we were, again, told that if you want to attract these type of events to bring in the type of economic development that you think you're going to bring in, you are going to need something like this. Or the NCAA is not going to show, and these other organizations, these soccer tournaments, et cetera, are not going to show. And so, it kind of became a decision. Do we want to look at something that would be in the best long-term economic development interests of the city, while admittedly paying a, quite a steep price initially? Or do we want to keep that price a little lower now, but perhaps sacrifice some of these events in the future? You know, this was a tough one for me. I think I've earned a bit of a reputation as a, as a sort of fiscal conservative, but I think, given some of those factors that I discussed, and I think that the city would happily provide to anyone, this is probably the right way to go. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion? Alderman Nujain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'm in support of this project, because I'm a firm believer that with this particular project, if you build it, they will come. You know, I just firmly believe that you're going to attract a lot of other organizations, a lot of different youth groups, and a lot of people use Municipal Stadium, I know for a fact. There's plenty of organizations. It also brings local tourists, again, like the mayor touched on, the hotels are booked, restaurants are filled. I think it's a great way to bring another point of economic development to our city of Waterbury, and to attract other areas of, you know, different organizations throughout the state to hold certain things. Instead of going to maybe a Bridgeport or New Haven or other cities, maybe we can host some of these weekend championships with soccer, or football, or baseball, or, you know, things along that nature. So, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the design-build contract with Rosa Construction for Municipal Stadium Locker and Restroom Facilities, the amount of $3,965,791. A yes vote will be to approve the contract, a no vote to disapprove it. Let's do a roll call vote.
Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Yes.
Alderwoman Cato.
Yes.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Giacomi.
Yes.
Alderman Kula.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Matthews.
No.
Alderman, Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Napoli.
Yes.
Alderman Nujain.
Yes.
Alderman Sherman.
Yes.
Alderman Pernaruski.
Yes.
Thirteen approved, one no.
The motion carries, the contract is approved in the committee of the whole. With that, there being no further business to come before the committee of the whole, I'd entertain a motion to return to the regular order of business.
So moved.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. We'll take these two items up with the consent counter at the end, rather than doing another vote again right now. Before we go into committees, one more item, I would note that you should have received, delivered to your homes this week, and there's another one on your desk this evening, an item number nine to be added, which is a budget transfer regarding the capital improvement fund, dealing with changes within the police department to put additional security cameras into the downtown parking garage and other downtown areas. It would be added as item number nine, it would be referred to the finance committee. Is there a motion to add this to the agenda?
Motion to add on item number nine to finance.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries unanimously, the item is added as new business item number nine. With that, we will recess into committees. We'll start this evening with the finance committee and then go on to the intergovernmental. Thank you. I call the finance committee meeting to order. Item number five, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a budget transfer within the city's Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, in the amount of $4,038,75, as submitted by Sarah Argary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing no discussion. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number six, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a budget transfer within the city's Water Pollution Control Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, in the amount of $100,000, as submitted by Sarah Argary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing no discussion, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item eight, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an abatement of property taxes and interest due the city on account of her inability to pay, as submitted by Alexi Serrano, 42 Pine Street, Waterbury, Connecticut.
Make a motion to refer to Corporation Council.
I have a motion to refer item eight to Corporation Council. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item eight will be referred to the Corporation Council. Item number nine, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a budget transfer within the city's Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, in the amount of $143,42.75, as submitted by Sarah Argary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That concludes our, oh, excuse me, standing. Standing. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $10,240.23, submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. That concludes our business for the evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to call into order the meeting, the intergovernmental meeting scheduled for October 22nd, 2018. If I may get your attention, first item on the agenda is item number three. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman schedules a public hearing regarding the proposed inter-municipal agreement with the city of Waterbury and the borough of Nagatok for the sharing of taxes and the development of properties in Nagatok and Waterbury, as submitted by Jean Perry Phillips, Phillips, Holman, and Calley LLC, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a recommendation that we set a public hearing for November 8th at 6:55 p.m. at Alderman Chambers.
So moved.
If I may just request that that date will be moved back to November 19th, 2018.
That's accepted.
Alderman Brunelli, can you second that, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion to approve and schedule the public... Okay, I have a motion to approve and schedule the public hearing. It has been seconded. Next item on the agenda is item number four. Due to the fact that disagreement between the city of Waterbury and the Waterbury Police Union has been gratified, I'm going to table, I'm going to hold this item. Next item is item number seven. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves a request seeking from Corporation Council an outline of the steps the city might take to establish a process by which historical significant structures within Waterbury may be reviewed and protected as appropriate, as submitted by Paul Pernaruski, President of the Board of Alderman, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve Item Seven.
Second.
I have a motion to approve Item Seven, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you. With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item One and Two are receiving place on file. Item number three is on consent to set a public hearing for November 19th, 2018, at 6:55 p.m. in these chambers with respect to the proposed intermunicipal agreement with the city of Waterbury and Borough of Nagatuck for the sharing of taxes and development of properties in Nagatuck and Waterbury. Item number four is on hold. Item Five is on consent to approve a budget transfer within the city's Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, in the amount of $4,038,875. Item Six is on consent to approve a budget transfer within the city's Water Pollution Control Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, in the amount of $100,000. Item Seven is on consent to approve a request that the Board of Alderman seek from the Corporation Council an outline of the steps the city might take to establish a process by which historically significant structures within Waterbury may be reviewed and protected as appropriate. Item Eight is on consent to refer to the Corporation Council, a request to abate property taxes and interest due the city on account of inability to pay. Item number nine is on consent to approve a budget transfer, the Capital Improvement Fund of fiscal year, fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, in the amount of $143,42.75. Old Business Item Number One is on consent to approve a capital appropriation and bond authorization for improvements at Municipal Stadium in the amount of $5 million. And Old Business Item Number Two is on consent to approve a design-build contract with JA Rosa Construction LLC for Municipal Stadium Locker Room and Restoration Facility in the amount of $393,965,791. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Nap, uh, Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any additions or deletions from the consent calendar? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the consent calendar as read, a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries unanimously. The consent calendar is approved. With respect to standing committees, the Chair would recognize Alderman DiGiovan Carlo as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $10,240.23, submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alderman Martinez McCarthy and, uh, seconded by Alderman Kula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The refunds are approved. Before we adjourn, I would just note, you all may have this in you, on your desks, but November 11th, Veterans Day falls on Sunday this year, so our Veterans Day services are going to be on Sunday, beginning at 9:30 with the church service at St. Leo the Great Church, which is on Indian Trail off Pierpont Road. At 11 o'clock will be the services. They will not be on the green this year. They will be here in City Hall at Veterans Hall, which is the other end of this hallway. And at 12:15, there is a Gold Star Luncheon's Mother, which, uh, Mother's Luncheon, which will be held at the Waterbury Elks Lodge. It is $12 per person, and you need to make a reservation beforehand. So if you need contact information, let me know. Is there anything else?
No parade.
What's that?
No parade.
No, they don't do parade for the Veterans Day. They just used to do it on the green, but it gets cold in November, so they're doing it here instead. Anything else? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.